I'd like to bring the April 12th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Meeting to order. Would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Abbott?
Here.
Commissioner Selberg?
Here.
Commissioner Bruhl?
Here.
Commissioner Azami?
Here.
Commissioner Walker?
Here.
Commissioner Beller?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Gordon?
Here.
Chairman Flouche?
Present.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. This is our annual meeting where we elect a new chairman and vice chairman. So I will open up the nominations for chairman.
Mr. Chairman, you're doing a great job. I recommend the nomination of Carl Flouche as the chairman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Nominations for vice chairman.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I think you're doing a great job and I'll nominate you just to stay in that position.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign.
No pires?
I vote no. All right, thank you very much. Item number one. Oh, wait a minute, just one second. Couple of announcements real quick. Anyone who has not yet signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete the request to speak form, which is also located at the lobby table next to the signing sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you wish to speak on, including sub items. Please note that there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There's also a ramp located at the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, please have seventeen copies and give them to the staff member in the back of the auditorium. She has her hand up. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents that's located on the podium there. Please take your documents to the podium and then line them up on the arrows indicated. If you want your documents to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the document. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are sitting at the tables with the microphones up front. If you have any questions, see the lobby member located in the auditorium back. All speakers are limited to two minutes to make their presentations and statements. Anyone, everyone, please turn off your cell phones, pagers, or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must receive a phone call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussion. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward the recommendations to the Board of Supervisors. The items with the recommendations made by the Commission will be heard by the Board of Supervisors on Monday, May 1st, 2017, at 9:30 a.m. in the same location, with the exception of any continued items. Everyone attending the meeting is also asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are a tobacco-free area, which means no smoking is allowed curb-to-curb. Also, only bottled water is allowed in the auditorium. No food, soda, coffee, et cetera, is allowed in the auditorium. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch from 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from last month? If so, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve of the minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Selberg and a second by Commissioner Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Item number one.
Item number one is an evaluation of a request for a renewal of a zoning use permit on Assessor's Parcel Number 314-41004 for a dog kennel in an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 minimum lot size zone in the Valentine vicinity. This renewal will continue the approval of a dog kennel as required by BOS Resolution Number 2002-19. This will be the fifth renewal of this property. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions except condition number two, which states that this renewal will be in effect without an expiration. Thank you.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any questions that the Commission might have for the applicant? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Have a motion by Commissioner Abbott, second by Commissioner Selberg. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to commend the applicant for getting this approved without expiration. Fine job he must be doing.
Yes, I agree. No one's complained? And I think that would be the only reason that there would ever be anything, is if there were complaints. So, we have none of those. Item number two.
Item 2A is an evaluation of a request to rescind and cause the property to revert from a C2H highway commercial zone to the previous zone of AR agricultural residential for failure to meet the conditions of approval as specified in BOS Resolution Number 98-163, which approved the rezone of Assessor Parcel Numbers 402-32-125 and 126 in the Beaver Dam vicinity. This property was conditionally approved for a rezone from an AR zone to a C2H zone by the Mojave County Board of Supervisors on May 4th, 1998 by BOS Resolution Number 98-163 to allow for commercial development. This resolution allowed the applicant a one-year period to comply with all conditions. Conditions of approval have not been completed, and BOS Resolution 98-163 expired on May 4th, 1999. A letter was sent by Certified Mail on February 8th, 2017 notifying the property owners that the approval of the rezone had expired and that the resolution would be scheduled for rescission. We're bringing this item before you because we need to kind of clean up the zoning in that area. Originally, two properties were rezoned to C2H, and a developer has come in to do a commercial development on one of those parcels. And so, in order to get the rezoning cleared up, we would have to rescind the original rezoning because it had expired. And the next two items would rezone the property again to C2H. Staff recommends approval, recommends that BOS Resolution Number 98-163 be rescinded and the zoning revert to an AR agricultural residential zone.
Okay, and so, item 2B and 2C are to get it back to where it's supposed to be?
Correct.
Is the applicant present? Applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any thoughts from the Commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Beller and a second by Commissioner Gordon. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 2B?
2B is an evaluation for a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from neighborhood commercial land use designation to general commercial land use designation, and an amendment to the Virgin River Communities Area Plan from neighborhood commercial land use designation to general commercial land use designation to allow for a travel plaza and gas station for Assessor Parcel Number 402-32-125 in the Beaver Dam vicinity. Staff recommends approval.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any thoughts from the Commission?
I have a question for staff. Item 2A refers to partial number 402-32-125 and 126. Am I missing something? I don't see 126 in this. And is 126, are both of them supposed to be applicable to this request?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Abbott, like I said previously, the original rezone was for two parcels, which was the 125 and 126. The applicant only owns the 125, and the 126 is no longer relevant. And so, there, we rescinded both of the original rezone that was done in 1998. And then, this current rezone is only for the one parcel that the applicant owns, which is the 125.
And 126 doesn't exist?
It exists, but it's owned by somebody else.
They've excluded that basically from the...
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve based on staff recommendations. I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gordon and a second by Commissioner Beller. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 2C.
Item 2C is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 402-32-125 from an AR agricultural residential zone to a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for a travel plaza and gas station in the Beaver Dam vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
The applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any discussion with the Commission? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Second motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Abbott. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of a portion of Assessor Parcel Number 12004031 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36 acre minimum lot size zone to a CRE, commercial recreation zone, to allow for a clubhouse and other subdivision amenities in the Lake Havasu vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any discussion from the Commission? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Azami, a second by Commissioner Selberg. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 12014093 from an RMH residential manufactured homes zone to an R2 single-family medium-density multifamily low-density zone to allow for a site-built home in the Lake Havasu vicinity. We received one letter in opposition. A similar item in an adjacent subdivision with the same zoning was heard at the January 11th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and the February 6th, 2017 Board of Supervisors meeting. The item was denied because the proposed use was not consistent with the surrounding land uses. The proposed use appeared to be in contrary to the subdivision covenants, conditions, and restrictions, and the proposed use was opposed by other property owners in the subdivision. Staff recommends denial of the proposed rezone for the following reasons. The proposed rezone is not consistent with zoning in the surrounding area, which was subdivided and zoned as a manufactured home subdivision. And two, the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 11th, 2017, and the Board of Supervisors on February 6th, 2017, denied a similar item that had the same request. Should the Commission decide to recommend approval of the proposed rezone, the following conditions should apply. The property will be rezoned to R2 single-family medium-density multifamily low-density. The appropriate permits will be obtained prior to construction, and the rezone should not become effective until at least thirty days after final approval. Thank you.
Okay. Item number four. Is the applicant present? The applicant is not present. Any discussion from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I just had a question for staff. Do they have the same situation where they have CCNRs that prohibit that as well on this one?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Selberg, I looked myself to see if I could find any CCNRs, but could not find any.
Thank you.
I believe it's all part of the same homeowners' association, though. So, there's probably something there. Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the denial recommendation by the staff.
Second.
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Azami, a second by Mr. Abbott. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The item is denied. Item number five.
Item number five is a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 306-22-183 from an AR 2A agricultural residential two-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity, Mojave County General Area, Mojave County, Arizona. The department received one letter in support of this rezone. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any discussion of the Commission? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner Gordon. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, A.
Item 6A is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from rural development area land use designation to commercial recreation land use designation to allow for an off-road track for Assessor Parcel Number 351-13021 in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff recommends approval.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any discussion from the Commission? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve per staff recommendations. I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Selberg and a second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. 6A passes, approve. 6B?
Item 6B is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 351-13021 from an AR 5A agricultural residential five-acre minimum lot size zone to a CRE, commercial recreation zone, to allow for an off-road track in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
The applicant is present. I'll entertain a motion. We have no speakers.
I'll make that motion to approve per staff recommendations. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Selberg and a second by Commissioner Gordon. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number seven.
Item number seven is evaluation of a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Number 326-04-011B from a C2H highway commercial zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a single-family residential use in the Dolan Springs vicinity. The department received one letter in opposition to this request. Staff recommends approval with the standard conditions.
Item number seven. Is the applicant present? The applicant is not present. We have no speakers on the item. Any discussion from the Commission?
I have a question for the staff. The properties in that vicinity, are they more, I mean, you know, within a reasonable distance, is that residential?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Azami, this particular property is right along Pierce Ferry Road, and most of the properties along Pierce Ferry Road in this area are actually C2H. There are a couple of properties to kind of the southwest that are AR, and there's A behind this with AR further back. The applicant is requesting this rezon. Under the rules of the revised zoning ordinance, they can put a single-family residence here without coming to the Commission and the Board. What's forcing them to the Commission and the Board is actually their financing package.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Commissioner Azami, a second by Commissioner Beller. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number eight.
Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Numbers 326-03-108B and 108C from an A general zone to a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for a restaurant in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. We have no speakers on the item. Any discussion from the Commission? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve per staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Beller, a second by Commissioner Selberg. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number nine, A.
Item nine, A, is an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from low-density residential land use to light industrial land use to allow for open lot storage on Assessor Parcel Number 324-10058A in the Kingman vicinity. Staff has received one petition in opposition. There are thirteen signatures on it. However, only two of the signatures are within the 300-foot notification radius. Staff recommends approval.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. We have a couple of speakers. Robert Smith. Come up to the podium, please. Please state your name and address.
Good morning. My name is Wayne Smith, and I live at 4245 North Seattle Road. And I am here to represent my mother and myself, because we all live in this general area. This property is directly behind my mother's house. We are not in favor of any more commercial development along this residential area. We've had problems in the past with one that was allowed to go through was a roofing company, Canyon State Roofing, and they were coming in and out of there at all hours of the morning and evening, making a lot of noise. And we're not, we do not want any more commercial development in that area with it. There's no buffer zone or anything for the residents along that area.
So, are you to the east or to the south or north?
My mother lives right directly behind it. Her name is Judith Smith.
Okay.
And I live at the other end of the street at 4245 toward the north.
Is that an alley that I see behind there?
Well, it's not, it's supposed to be a street, but there's no street there. It's a dirt trail.
Okay.
It never was developed at all, so...
Okay.
But, along with the other neighbors in the area, they elected me to come speak, and they all disapprove of any more commercial development in that area, in this area.
Any questions of the Speaker from the Commission?
I have a question. Canyon State Roofing or other, I think they have other parts in that also, but is there only outlet on Stockton Hill Road?
On Gordon, actually, right next to the fire station.
So, their outlet from that big building they have in the back there is how?
Well, I wouldn't recommend going the other way. The other direction is like, there's no road there.
Go out to Gordon or Stockton Hill?
Well, you can't go out Stockton Hill from there. You can go, you gotta turn around and go...
You can go between those buildings there that are leased to several people.
Well, I guess you could. I don't know if they would appreciate that or not, but...
But, as you see it, they're going out on Gordon?
They're going out on Gordon.
Thank you.
What's your mother's address?
4025. They actually sent her, for this item and the next item coming up, they sent her a mailing that said that she was 4065, which is not my mother. My mother, the guy next door to my mom is Virgil. Can't remember his last name, but he is actually 4065.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Anyways, all of the neighborhood, we oppose of this. We would hope you would disapprove it. Thank you.
All right. Any additional questions of the Speaker? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We have no additional speakers. Any questions or comments from the commission?
I'd like to hear from.
Does the applicant want to talk?
From the applicant is what they plan on doing there.
My name is Christine Van Vliet. My husband and I are the owners of forty-sixty North Sierra Road, the parcel that is in question. Do you have questions or would you just like me to make a statement?
We'd just like to know what you're going to do.
We are planning on making open lot storage and overrun maintenance area. We own the Arizona Northwest RV Marine right in front of that lot on Stockton Hill Road. We have been in business there since nineteen eighty, in business on Stockton Hill Road since nineteen eighty-two and at that current location since nineteen eighty-four for thirty-three years. The press, the property in question was not a recent purchase for the expansion, but has been owned by the same owner since nineteen ninety-eight. The property owners are good neighbors. We have worked with both the city and the county and various departments on the water containment project and have improved the property to increase its value and to add the value to all of the surrounding properties. We have filled the parcel, graded, gravelled to reduce dust, fenced, collected trash, weeds, et cetera, on this property to keep it in good condition. The no-growth platform and not-in-my-backyard mindset of the neighbors, cities need landfills, jails, et cetera, and these are services to the communities. However, nobody wants these in their backyard. We can't choose our neighbors, but we can be good neighbors and support the ones we have. Small businesses need the support of the community. We bring a needed service and provide jobs, tax revenue, and increase the tax base for members of the community. We believe that our parcel, our proposal for open lot storage and overflow maintenance use of this property is a great buffer area use as it is not bringing extra traffic to this area. We will go straightly, directly across from the RV lot to that lot. There will be no in-and-out traffic on that dirt road. The proposed use fits with the neighborhood and it does not overwhelm it. There is also a setback from the affected residential properties already in place as the concrete city water containment project is between the residential properties and the proposed parcel.
What would your hours of operation be for that, going back and forth?
The RV lot is open nine to five, Monday through Friday, and I believe ten to four on Saturdays and closed on Sundays.
Thank you.
Any additional questions of the speaker?
I have one. Is there any thoughts on paving that road or doing any improvements? I know you're saying you're not going to be accessing the lot from Gordon. You're just going to be going through your property that's on the west side of the road, crossing the road into the proposed lot?
That is correct.
Have you guys?
It would just be for the storage of the overflow RV units.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
I'd like to say.
State your name and.
My name is Wayne Smith. Currently, there's a box semi-trailer sitting on there with a bunch of telephone poles. And when they did put that channel through there, they raised that lot a little higher so it's the high side of the land running. So with that box trailer there now, which they own another box trailer that's on their Northwest RV with the four-to-five-foot axles on it, when you walk out the backyard of my mother, you see that box trailer sticking up. So, and that's a real eyesore. The other thing is, is once it's rezoned, what's to say that they might turn around and resell this piece of property to somebody else to put something else in there other than overflow storage and work, you know, on something, you know? So that's one of our real hangups there.
Yeah. Well, we have absolutely no crystal ball to figure out what's going to happen down the road, but appreciate your comments.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Last my, you know, data on my information, I just need to ask staff a question. What is the current zoning or what was established this property parcel?
Low-density.
Low-density residential. So it's been low-density for a while, right? I mean, that was.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yeah, it's current zone as far as we know.
It's been low-density residential. So the applicant had full knowledge of this property and the application of it. So, you know, that's troublesome to basically mean not being consistent with the neighboring properties.
Any additional comments from the commission? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say.
Yes.
I have some mixed emotions about the applicant, about the lady who lives behind there having a problem with it. But I do know Arizona Northwest RV runs a very good operation and have for years. So I've seen some things they do there in the back. They cleaned up stuff compared to what it was ten, fifteen years ago, so. But you're right that if someone else comes in there, does, how, what does it change?
Wait, that's the crystal ball part. No one really knows. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Staff, maybe I'm missing, what's the zoning on the two parcels immediately south? And what's the use on the parcel, the second parcel south? There's a vacant lot, fifty-seven A and fifty-six A appears to have some sort of, is that the roofing company or whatever we were talking about?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gordon, the lot that you're describing that is directly south, I believe your maps might be wrong, we're actually talking about the seven, the seven A one. And the one directly south of that is Zone CMO. And that's where they currently have their RV operation. And so they're looking to expand their RV operation into their next parcel, which is the, the zero-five-eight-A, sorry.
Okay, so the vacant lot is AR and the next one is CMO.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, go ahead. You got a question? Come up to the podium, please.
When I did submit for the rezone, I did submit aerial photos, and you should have that. The other lots that are next to us on North Sierra are all the low-density commercial properties, including the roofing company and the other two that are next to us. And we were also told when the city and the county worked with us and condemned part of our property to make the water channel there, the water containment project through our property, they took part of our property from us and told us that since it was not the acre anymore for the residential AR agricultural, that we would be able to use this in the commercial sense as the other properties are on that street.
What's the, what's the dimension from your property line to, let's say, the gal that lives directly behind you? How far is it from your property line to her property line? I know. Is that thirty feet, fifty feet, ten feet?
It's the city property with the water drainage.
Twenty to thirty feet?
In between there.
Is that reasonable to say? Thirty? Okay. Twenty-four feet? Okay. All right. So, yes. Yes, staff.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a correction in my previous statement where Commissioner Gordon asked what the zoning is adjacent or to the south. It is actually the AR, which is agricultural residential, in between their property, which is the CMO that has the RVs on it. So it's AR, AR, CMO.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On the picture, it shows some sort of a fence or is that, do they have a fence in there? Is there perimeter fence on that property?
Are you asking me that question?
Go ahead.
It is currently fenced on three sides. It will be completely fenced with a gate.
Do you mind, because I'm sure that you understand the concern of your neighboring properties, you know, because of the look of it and things like that. Are you opposing having some enhancement like trees or something in the perimeter to beautify it so at least, you know, they don't look at the semi-truck in the back?
No, and we're also open to entertain even a privacy fence or maybe a height restriction. But the thing is, on the RV lot on our building, we do have the security cameras that look that direction, and it is probably twelve feet high. And when you look over that property and the water drainage project that is there, you cannot see even the windows to the homes that are there. So if they're looking out the windows, they can't see up and over now the way that it is. They would have to get up to look over to see that on top.
So you guys wouldn't have a problem doing a side obstructing fence on the east side of the property?
No.
So, okay.
Do we have something in here for a view obstructing fence? I didn't.
On the, Mr. Chairman, on the next item for the rezone, we have in place that they have to meet our site plan requirements.
Okay.
Which would require for a open lot storage of view obscuring fence.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion, any questions of the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on nine A.
I'll make that motion to approve per staff recommendations.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Selberg, a second by Commissioner Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Nine B.
Item nine B is an evaluation for a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 32410058A from an AR agricultural residential zone to a CMO, commercial manufacturing, open lot storage zone to allow for open lot storage in the Kingman vicinity. The county has received one petition against this item with thirteen signatures, two of which are within the three hundred foot notification zone. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
The applicant is present. Mr. Wayne, would you like to speak again? Mr. Smith, rather, I'm sorry. No? Okay. We have no additional speakers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Abbott, have you visited the site? You know, are you familiar with this?
I drive past it.
Okay.
All the time, so I know what it looks like.
I know that, you know, part of this application by the staff recommendation, there's a fence that is going to happen. Do you think that, you know, they, you know, have some sort of.
I would say if they put some kind of fence there that.
Or tree?
Yeah.
To provide some beautification?
I'm not familiar with what's behind there with the gentleman that's speaking there. But in front, I've driven past there for twenty-six, twenty-seven years. I'd say an average of once a day, so.
What I'm saying is that, you know, if they.
It's in with what they're doing there, I think.
Right. What I'm saying is that, you know, in the buffer between the residential and, you know, this particular project, if they put some, you know, trees along the perimeter fence, would that would enhance it and by the trees growing?
I think, why don't you ask this gentleman?
Well, no, I know. I'm just, you know, asking you because physically you saw it.
My position is, I can't speak for what they're seeing. I'm not that, I haven't gone back there and looked at it. I'm not sure.
Mr. Smith, do you think that, you know, if they beautify it by putting some trees, because you mentioned that, you know, your mom can see the semi-truck in there and all that. So if they, if it would be part of the requirement to have trees alongside of the fence, do you think that would satisfy your neighbors in the back?
I think that would satisfy my mother especially.
What I'm thinking is that eventually, even if they make a sale or somebody else comes, the trees are going to grow and create a buffer between, you know, residential and the other side of the project. I mean, you know, I think that's what you're looking for. You want to have, you don't want to have an eyesore, basically, right?
That's correct. And if it is going to be approved, I would appreciate the owners of the property to put up a fence high enough to block whatever they store in there. And the thing, the other thing is, you know, it's a residential property and there's no buffer between the residents and any commercial. And, you know, down the street on the city side, I know this doesn't have nothing to do with the county, but the city side, all the homeowners in Wally Ranch voted to shut that street down completely behind Home Depot because of all the noise and the trucks and everything that were coming in and out. And that's, us, the residents along here, we're fearful for the noise level and everything that's going to be caused by this. Because they'll just go down the line and it'll all be, you know, you've opened the floodgate now for every property along there now to become commercial, you know? So it's going to just go right on down the line, so.
So if we, if we put a view obstructing fence and then also plant some trees along there, you think that'll be satisfactory?
I guess.
Yeah, well.
I'd have to agree that it would, yes.
Okay, okay.
Improve it.
Well, the other part of it is, is that I'm not sure how high the fence is, but we should probably take into consideration the height of the fence, too. So if it's a five-foot fence, it probably needs to be a little bit taller.
Say an eight-foot.
Eight-foot fence?
Eight-foot, preferably, that would.
Okay. All right.
And I'd also like to say that I've talked to Mr. Van Vliet myself, and he does have a respectable business that's been here for years since I was a little guy, so anyways, nothing against him.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can we get clarification then from staff on what height fence is going to be put in there?
Staff?
That's going to be.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Abbott, the actual type of fencing, et cetera, is taken care of at the site plan stage, so at this stage, we don't know. The ordinance says that it must be at least six feet and it has to be two feet above the highest items stored. It does, however, exclude things like vehicles, motorhomes, you know, the trailer portion of a truck trailer. Those are excluded.
So if we approve that, that'll be a requirement?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendations.
Okay, but how about the trees, adding the trees?
Trees.
Trees.
Trees. I think that trees is a very hard thing to describe and ask someone to require. I mean, you, then you put trees, you put water back there, you start, the fence eight feet tall should be adequate in my thinking.
Well, it still has to have some.
I have no objection to the trees. I love trees. I love trees, but-
I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, from, you know, the neighboring properties, looking at it, it's a happy medium between, you know, the two, between the application and the neighboring community to have, you know, screen also with the trees. And, you know, I think that would be something that both, and you, you heard Mr. Smith, you know, he agreed that, you know, that would be-
I'll tell you one of the problems of the trees. If you go out Stockton Hill Road, just after you pass Jaggersen, you look over to your right, driving north, you see some huge pine trees. I'm sure Mr. Walker's seen them. And they're getting to be where they're a real problem. They're so big. I mean, they're not just twenty feet tall, they're, they're much taller. So I, 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 I think a, an eight-foot fence would really take care of the problem.
With slats or something.
Pardon?
With slats or something.
Yeah.
Obstructing view.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I think that's required by the ordinance anyway.
I think it is, too.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
I think it is, too. Uh, okay, Mr. Abbott's made a motion.
Could we, could I have?
Could you restate your motion?
Could you please restate the motion?
I'm just making a motion for staff recommendation.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Commissioner Abbott, second by Commissioner Walker. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
No.
No.
We have two, two declines. Okay, motion still carries.
There was no opportunity to amend the motion?
Uh, to what?
To move to amend the motion to include, uh, buffer, um, trees, shrubs, some other-
It's all, it's all included in the ordinance. Not the trees, but the, uh, view obscuring fences.
It was discussed, and the motion carried.
Yeah, we're already kind of late for that. But it's, it's-
Maybe the applicant wants to-
I thought there would be an opportunity to discuss the motion once it was on the floor and then make an amendment to it.
Yeah, that's, uh, we're, we're a little bit late on that.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We went by Robert's rules.
Yes.
The applicant's standing, maybe she wants to add trees. I don't know.
Okay, well, maybe we'll redo this whole thing.
In the, in the photo that they have here, the staff has here, it shows the, uh, trees that are in the back on the other side on the residential properties. Where our fence is, we currently do have six-foot fence on three sides of that property. And the fence is right next to the city property, which is the water containment project. That is concrete there. So there, the, if the trees were planted there, they would be inside the fence, not on the outside where the neighbors could see the greenery. It would be inside the fence with the RVs.
So the, the picture that I'm looking at is, I can see the fence going around on three sides. Now, the trees, are they facing the, the property that, uh, Mr. Smith was talking about?
Yes, the residents are behind that.
So we already have trees back there?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And then the rest is the concrete project that belongs to the city. You can't plant trees in concrete.
Yeah. That's a blacktop, uh, looks like blacktop.
No, it's gravel.
Gravel.
On the-
Uh.
The motion was, yeah.
Yeah, we already, so was that trees already there?
Mr. Chairman? Correct, that was nine A, correct?
That was nine-
Was that nine A or B?
Nine B.
That was B, okay.
Yeah. Nine A and B are pretty much the same, except for-
Right.
Rezone on nine B.
Point of order?
Yes.
I'm sorry for my lack of knowledge, but I believe when there's a motion and a second, then there would be discussion of that item prior to a vote?
Okay.
And we failed to do that in this last motion. And so, yes, I was too late because I anticipated discussion subsequent to that.
Uh, let me get some, Mr. Taylor, tell me what to do.
Chairman Flusche, that is typically the, the procedure that is followed. I'm not sure that it's, it's always required.
Apparently I missed the, the second discussion part.
Yeah.
So what do we do?
You could reopen the motion for discussion.
I'd like to reopen the motion for discussion. Uh, those in favor, I'd like to have a new, uh, a new motion.
I'll make a motion to reopen for discussion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to reopen. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. Ms. Brule.
In listening to the discussion, the property owner, there were two property owners that objected out of the thirteen that were listed. What percentage of property owners does that represent?
The, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brule, the two that are within the three hundred foot radius represent, uh, roughly fourteen percent of the property owners that live within the three hundred foot radius.
I give a great deal of weight to the property owner and their concerns. After hearing all of the discussion, I understand that they believed they would accept this change if they could have some kind of beautification. I'm not sure how that could be accomplished. I don't have a recommendation for that, but I really believe that, uh, it deserves some, to be addressed in some way. I'm not sure how that could be addressed. Staff have any ideas or any other, Commissioner?
Scott?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, as far as we're concerned, we have to abide by our zoning ordinance and what that requires. So when they come to us for a site plan, we're gonna require them to meet those standards.
She's looking for examples.
Uh, they can use, in, in the zoning ordinance, it does allow for shrubbery to be used as a view obscuring, uh, device. So that could be an option for them when they come to that point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, this application definitely, most definitely is consistent with the land use ordinance. So, you know, there, there's no ifs and buts about it, that, you know, it is consistent. Uh, I believe that, uh, I didn't have a clear picture. It seems like, uh, there, there are trees, uh, on the side of the neighboring properties existing, and, uh, you know, that would, uh, you know, help what, uh, Mr. Smith was requiring. And then with the, uh, new, uh, fence, uh, that was putting at, you know, uh, the higher elevation, I think, uh, that would satisfy the neighbors, you know, to be happy with the application, the way I see it. So, uh, you know, I, as I said, I'm, I'm, right now I changed my mind from nay to aye. So, you know, based on what I'm here.
I see those trees. Is that on the applicant's property?
Yeah.
Is that on your property? No.
It's not on our property. That is on the residential side.
Okay, so that's actually-
So they are obscuring their views from-
That's on the Smith property?
I, I'm not sure whose property that is.
The property behind you?
Yes.
Okay.
So there are already trees there alongside of the fence?
On the residential side, that is correct.
Okay.
Obscuring also the city water project that is the concrete there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Could we hear from the resident, Mr. Smith? Once again, I'd like to ask him a question.
Mr. Smith, could you come back up, please?
Hi, after hearing all of this discussion, are the existing trees sufficient to?
Those existing trees are not on my mother's property. My mother has no trees on her property in the back. Those are the lot down, the next lot down. And there's actually three people that got cards in the mail, not two, but three, that are on the list of fourteen that oppose to the rezone.
So three of them?
There's three. Brian and Michelle Vlandingham, Judy Smith, and Burl, Verlin York, I believe his name is. Uh, I believe those trees are in Mr. York's backyard.
Thank you. Staff, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman? I, I was just gonna ask staff if they could confirm or verify that, whether there are two or three? And then what percentage that would represent?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brule, I believe, uh, one of the three that they are referencing is on the east side of Saddle Lane, which puts it, uh, roughly three hundred and ten feet away. So it is outside the boundary, but just barely.
Okay.
Well, these lot, these lots are all two hundred and fifty foot wide, so.
Yeah, they're big lots.
And the other thing is, Mr. Walker mentioned an eight-foot fence instead of a six-foot fence that I said would, you know, I'd like to have it a little bit higher.
Yeah.
Uh, some of these pictures that they took that I s- have seen, uh, looks like they're like downhill, looking at the drainage, but they're not really looking from the other side, so.
Okay, well, I'm confused a little bit here. Uh, I need a little clarification. These trees that we're looking at, can we get the trees up on the screen? Now, are those trees, is your mother's house on the other side of those trees, or is your mother's house on the left?
I'm not real sure where this shot here was taken. But my mother has a block wall fence.
Mm-hmm.
That she was forced to put up by the city when they put the channel through there. Um, there is no trees in my mother's backyard.
Okay.
She has them on the s- north and south side of her yard, but not on the west side.
So these are, these are, these are probably on the south side of the property?
I don't, I don't recognize that shot there.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, the picture, uh, on the screen is, uh, looking at the property facing east, just south of the drainage canal.
Okay. Okay, so we're back to the eight-foot fence is really what the, what the issue boils down to with the view, view obscoring, obscuring.
Mr. Chairman, since we're having a discussion, I said I had some mixed emotions on my thoughts, but I have a definite feeling that what's requested here is going to do nothing but improve the looks of that area.
I agree. I agree. Okay, any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to approve this item per staff recommendation in, with, with the proviso that an eight-foot fence with, eh, eh, it's my understanding it's an eight-foot fence, okay. Per staff recommendation.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Brule, and a second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number, uh, ten A.
Item ten A in its evaluation for request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from low-density residential land use designation to general commercial land use designation to allow for a radio studio and tower for Assessor Parcel Number Three Two Four One Zero Zero Five Nine A. We have received seventeen letters as of this morning, however, only six of which are in the three hundred foot notification radius. Staff recommends approval.
Is the applicant present? The applicant is present. We have, uh, two speakers. Uh, Mr. Smith?
Uh, uh, myself and my mother, which is-
Restate your name and address.
My name is, uh, Robert Wayne Smith, and I'm, I live at forty-two, forty-five North Shadow Road.
Thank you.
Um, my mother lives at forty-twenty-five, and I'm here representing her and also along with some of the other neighbors. Um, and I have a couple other of, the neighbors are here on this item. Um, one of them happens to have, the, hi- his house is directly right behind, uh, where the proposed radio antenna is going to go. And, um, I'll probably let him speak if, if he could, on his discussion he had with Mr. Lee on the ideas of installing the radio tower. Um, but anyways, there's seventeen people that live in that area directly behind it or to the side of it, and we oppose putting up any type of antenna, um, a hundred-foot antenna, and rezoning this piece of property to allow it. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Broka?
Good morning, I'm Tom Bakoka. Uh, thank you to the board for allowing me to speak on this topic. Uh, I do own the property directly, uh, to the east of the proposed radio tower. And there is no buffer. It's right on the other side of the fence. I, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Lee and, and we discussed it. Uh, that's a pretty good length. He, uh, informed me that the radio tower would be in this, pretty much in the center of their property, which puts it pretty much at the center of my property. Uh, right now, there's just kind of a, a wire fence in between the two properties. Uh, I had some concerns, uh, as far as, uh, I asked Mr. Lee if they thought they might lease, uh, space on the tower in the future. And then I heard the topic or, or the, the word earlier, crystal ball, and we're, I don't wanna try to look into the crystal ball, but people do lease tower space. And Mr. Lee couldn't, uh, really answer one way or the other, uh, at the time of our discussion. But, uh, you know, I, I was just wondering if that were to happen, uh, or if this radio station were to get additional equipment on the tower, would, uh, it, testing be done by a, a, a neutral party qualified to make the test, WECOM or something like that, to, uh, determine what the radio frequencies, uh, uh, are and, and, and maybe what increases they might entail should additional equipment be put on the tower? And is there gonna be a baseline test so we know where we're starting from, uh, you know, should the tower be, and radio station be commissioned? And then again, I, I'm sorry I didn't put it on my question, uh, form, but, uh, access in and out of the property, uh, you know, is it a twenty-four hour, uh, day radio station? Is there gonna be maintenance people driving in and out up and down Sierra Road? Uh, you know, I, I don't know. Those are all unanswered questions, but, uh, yeah, I had a, uh, the main concern was the buffer area that, uh, you know, around Kingman and surrounding areas, I, I have yet to see a radio tower that, eh, in a radio station that is that close to, uh, a residential area, let alone right on the other side of the fence. Um, and then, uh, then the question for, uh, RF, uh, emission testing, uh, by a, by a test facility in, in the future, again, should additional equipment be installed on the tower? Either by the, the applicant or somebody that may lease space on the tower. And that's pretty much all I had at the moment.
Okay. Any questions of the speaker? Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Uh, would the applicant like to come forward?
Yes, my name's Ron Lee, and I'm the pastor of Calvary Chapel, and, uh, this is Sally Lee, and she's the operation manager for the radio station.
I understand where the neighbors are coming from. I totally do. There's quite a bit of misconception about a low-power station. In the pictures that we sent and gave in our application, you'll see the type of tower that we're talking about. For any of you that are in, go down airway at Arizona Street, you'll see where Feathered Friends has their, there's a tower there. It will be much like that tower. It's right up against residential right behind it. It's, it's actually only 25-foot taller than a regular phone pole. So I think to kind of do away with any misconceptions of what we're talking about, we're not talking about a 200-foot. A 200-foot would need lights and all that. A 100-foot does not need lights. The RF on it, I checked with a lot of our, our gentlemen that work, our engineers that work with all that, and they, what basically they said is that the frequencies that, that are emitted are not even close to being able to touch or hurt dogs' ears, let alone human ears. It's a totally different type of emission. So I'm not sure if that answers some of the questions, but.
Any questions to the speaker? So what's the actual height gonna be of the tower?
100 feet.
100 feet. Are you planning on leasing any of that space on your tower to anybody else?
At this point, we don't plan on it, and we don't, we don't even think really that the type of tower that people would even want to lease on that because it's only 100-foot.
Okay. What are you gonna transmit?
We're transmitting our radio station, which is 24/7, but we're not there, but we would be at the studio on Wednesdays 10 to 4 and on Thursdays 10 to 2, so the foot traffic wouldn't be, not even 8 to 5 Monday through Friday, so very minimal.
Do you have to be approved by the FCC?
Absolutely. We already are.
Okay.
We're just moving our tower because where we're at right now, which is on Skylark, the people that we have it on their property are moving, so we have to move. And at that time, we wanted to combine our studio with our antenna so that we can better serve the community. And we, I have letters that just came in this morning and this week. We're constantly doing public service announcements for the community. So we, we really aim to serve the community and, and our neighbors as well. So we wanna be able to work with them as much as possible.
Okay. Any questions, any further questions of the speaker? Thank you so much. Oh, yes, Mr. Smith.
I have some questions for them. If, they say there's not gonna be any lighting at all. The, the tow, a 100-foot tower does not have to have a flashing light on top of it.
Apparently not.
And they, my understanding was they were gonna have 24/7. It was gonna be lit up. That area was gonna be lit up 24/7.
I'm getting a no from her.
So I don't know.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I think there was a little bit of confusion on that. He had asked, my husband, we texted him back, that yes, there would be lighting, but we didn't specify that, number one, there're gonna be motion detectors, much like everyone has on their houses, where if there's motion movement, that's gonna come on. We won't have any high-powered halogens or the huge big lights. We, we are very, very watchful of that. We live in a residential area as well, and we know what it's like if you have a light shining in your bedroom door.
So the motion detectors are gonna be on the building?
Yes.
Not on the tower?
Yeah, not on the tower. The tower does not have to be lit. It has to be lit if it's 199-foot, which we're well below that. And yeah, there's no lighting on the tower itself. There will be perimeter fencing right around the, the tower, and then additional fencing around the whole property.
Is this AM or FM?
FM.
FM.
And we've been on, on air since 2008. We've served the community faithfully. We, we really, really are pro-community. We love to get things on the air that other people won't be able to because they're dealing with a radio station that's not even based in Kingman, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, yes.
So, the way I understand that you already have your studio and your facility on this property, and you're trying to?
No, we, no, we're not on the property yet. We bought the property about five years ago for that, for the future. We also bought the property right next to it because we knew that we would, and the people around us, would want a buffer zone. And originally, we had decided, okay, for the, for the good of the community, we'd put it right in the middle, but I understand that actually we'll probably have to move it more to the southwest corner. So, but we are not there yet. And our studios, actually at the church, we transmit our signal via IP over to the transmitter site. We would like to combine the two because we, of course, through IP, you lose your signal on a regular basis, although we haven't really had any downtime this year. There was a time a few years ago that we were the only station playing in the Kingman area because we had had a bad storm and up on Getz Peak, a lot of the stations that are up on the peak went down because of snow, but we were the, we were still up and running. So we are useful to the community in that respect as well.
Okay, thank you.
One, I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The way your operation is now, you have an existing tower?
We have, we're on a 40-foot pole, and the reason why we need to go to 100-foot or we'd like to go to 100-foot is because, and when we bought the property there, the, the two lots, five, six years ago, there was a big booster that was not there in the vicinity. Now there is, and if we move onto that property, we really need that extra 50-foot or 50, 60-foot to get out from underneath that booster. And I'm not sure what radio station that is. I believe it's K AAA or maybe KG.
And if you don't get this request, what happens to your radio station?
We will probably, if we can't, we'll probably just go with what we would be allowed, whatever footage we're allowed on that property without, you know, having to go up to the 100-foot. We'll, we'll just go with what we have, and hopefully we'll get out from underneath.
Do you know what that height is?
Probably 50, 50-foot.
And 50-foot would give you as much as you've got now?
Yes, but because we're in, on the property, the 59A that we're gonna put it on, we're right underneath a huge, high-powered booster in the area, which our engineers have already told us, we may not make it out of that sphere without getting a lot of interference. So that's why we're trying to go with 100-foot.
That's the only questions I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I ask the applicant a question? We received several letters of protest, and one of the issues that was addressed, and I have no idea if this is accurate or, and I don't know if, but you know more than I do, is it something about the fact that pets, it could cause pets to howl and bark incessantly because of the?
Right.
Transmission?
Let me read some of, because I did some research on that, and because I, I wasn't really, like you, wasn't really, I had never really heard anything prior, you know, prior against that. One of our engineers said certain high frequencies can hurt a dog's ear, but those would be well above anything we can even hear. I have never heard of low frequencies causing the same thing, which is what ours would be. There is some info on very low frequencies being able to be felt by animals, think earthquake, but your radio station would not ever be able to generate either of those frequencies at enough power for any animal to hear or feel it. And then the other, one of the other gentlemen who has his own tech service within radio advised that radio transmitters, including AM, FM, LPFM, which is what we are, two-way cellular systems create and emit electromagnetic waves, not acoustical waves. Improper installation or poor maintenance of towers, antennas, feed lines could possibly create audible or inaudible vibrations, but other than that, it's, they, they're not acoustical. In other words, if you hear firemen going down the street and your dog starts howling, it's the acoustical waves that they're reacting to.
I understand EM, yes. Thank you.
Any additional questions to the speaker? Thank you so much. All right, we have no more speakers. I'll entertain a motion. Ah, yes, come on up, Tom.
Hi, Tom Bakoka again.
Yeah.
My question is now with regards to the security lighting and the motion detection at the facility. While I understand it's going to be low wattage LEDs, LEDs are low wattage, but they still put out as bright of a light as a streetlight. We have streetlights that are LED, so, and then we, and we also know that a rabbit can, can set off a motion sensor. I've seen rabbits set, set off motion sensors before, so I know it can be done. It probably has to do with the sensitivity that the motion detector set up, but what I'm getting at is the, the buffer area and the lack of any kind of screening or barrier in between the residential properties and the radio station with the, with maybe these, these LED lights, security lights going on and off at night or coming on and staying on for duration. There, there's nothing to block those out. And, and I realize that has nothing to do with the tower itself, but it has to do with the, the facility too, and I was wondering if, if that could be addressed. Thank you.
You know what? That's a good question. What, what, let me have the applicant come. What kind of downlighting are you planning on having?
Really, actually really low-key, much like your LED lights that you would have on your front area, like what we have on our house, only is pointing down and only just basically the front door, the back door, and one to the door to the, where the transmitter is. But it would be pointing down, as well as, the way that we had planned to put the, building is actually facing more northwest, which is away from Tom's mother's place. It's actually facing more towards Bull Mountain. And there is nothing, facing that way, there is no residential areas. It's all commercial. It's facing towards Stockton Hill. So that's what our plan is. We really, really do want to be a good neighbor and, and do whatever we can to, to allay any fears. Now, as far as any problems that would happen, like if, if even someone says, man, that, that light is bothering me and it's been on all night, we, on our radio station, we have to put on, where you come into the front gate or whatever, it has to be well-maintained and, and, and placed with all of our numbers, 24/7. We, so that, we've had calls in the middle of night saying, hey, your signal's down, you know, because they, they have access to our phone numbers. So if there's any problems at all, then they can, by all means, call us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How many feet off the ground do you think that light is gonna be?
The light probably, well, it's gonna be at the front door, you know, so.
Seven feet, eight feet?
Seven feet or so, yeah. Yep.
Okay, just like a regular porch light.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You said that your existing tower or pole is 44 feet?
Forty.
Forty feet. And you need to go to 100 to get away from the boot, the power booster, or is there something in between that?
No, we need to have as, up to the 100 feet so that we can get out from underneath it. Because the booster right now is like up here, because it's a huge one, like down Stockton Hill, and when the waves come down from it, it's going like this. Well, if we're sitting right underneath it, it's gonna squash our signal. But if we're just above that, which 100 feet would give that to us, we're able to get the signal out. It's, I hope that's understandable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions to the speaker?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I don't know if maybe I missed anything. Is there, is this gonna be fenced, this property? Is that a requirement?
Yes, absolutely. The FCC requires us to have the, at least a transmitter room or, or building fenced, but we actually are gonna fence the whole property and then fence right around the transmitter as well.
Yeah, and will that be an obscured fence, so you wouldn't see through it, or would it just be a chain link fence?
We had planned on doing a six-foot chain link in the back and six-foot on the sides, and then four-foot in the front unless we do a 20-foot setback, depending on where we are able to put our, our tower. But if we can go 20-foot back, then we can do a six-foot fence in the front, but it'll depend on where we put that, the tower.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one question for the applicant. Have you guys met with any of the owners? I mean, we have 13.
Yeah, absolutely. We actually talked to three or four of them, but the last, what, 12 or 13 letters, as Scott can attest, came in, in the last two days.
Okay.
So, but we, everyone that called, we talked with, you know, trying to touch base. We actually had formulated a letter to be able to send out to them, but it wouldn't have gotten there in enough time. So we thought, well, and most of the letters didn't really even have a phone number to call them back. There was one that just came in yesterday that had a phone number that, it came in late last night, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Mr. Smith?
I'd just like to say, we actually had 17 people that are opposed to this, but everybody on that, in that area, there's no way you can go outside and not see this antenna.
Right.
100-foot is pretty high. It's quite higher than a lot of, a lot of the power poles in the area. So aesthetics, you know, just, just the looks of it alone is not, and I'm just wondering, don't they normally have a, a buffer zone for something that high? So I could just set one up in my backyard and there's no.
Excellent. If you're a ham operator, you can.
100-foot?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, as long as the height, there's a height restriction with the length.
I know there's several FM radials around the area that are like 50-foot or 40-foot, but not 100-foot.
It's better, isn't that the ordinance that we have, or it cannot fall into somebody's property or something?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Zarmy, our ordinance states that the tower, no matter how high it is, would have to at least be 300 feet from any residence. So it has, from the house itself, would have to be at least 300 feet. That's why the applicant mentioned that it's gonna have to go in the northeast or northwest corner of their property. It has to be 300 feet from the, the actual house. And then when, when you describe the height of the tower, and that's in regards to the setbacks in residential areas, it would have to be double the height of the tower. But being this is commercial, we just have to meet the setbacks of the commercial zone.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to ask staff, as long as you're answering, Mr. Smith was talking about the fact that they would be seeing the tower from their homes. fact that they would be seeing the tower from their homes, but in fact, if a tower was placed on the nearest commercial property, commercially zoned property, at 100 feet, wouldn't it be visible from those same homes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, most likely you'd be able to see it, the same as any other commercial property in that area. In the C2H zone, it allows for a 40-foot tower already, and then the applicant is requesting the additional special use permit and the, and the later items to bring it to the 100-foot.
It's consistent.
Thank you.
Now, he just said you have to be 300 feet from residential property line?
House.
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 Oh, so their property counts in it too?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Because those lots are only like 225 by 225, something like that.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be real hard for him to scoot that into the corner to get, get away from the.
I, I, I see what you're saying.
Thank you.
So do we know the depth of the property, speaking of the 300 feet? And I mean, I know the 200 feet for if they fall, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, we could probably look up the, the depth of the, the property, but I did some measurements on my own with the, with the GIS tool, and could see that they could be the 300-foot distance from the residence if they placed the, the tower in the northwest corner of their property.
Okay, so the house is so far back, the lot's so far back.
Correct.
300 feet, okay. Okay. Any additional questions? I'll entertain a motion on item number 10A. Somebody?
Mr. Chairman?
Motion to deny.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion to deny by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Abbott. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Order of order.
Any further discussion, sorry.
Could the maker of the motion outline his reasoning and help me out here?
I'll make a motion to deny due to the neighboring area not, I guess, fitting in.
That would be the same reason, I, I know the area pretty good, just driving up and down the streets, and does not seem to be to fit in.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if it was something that would, you know, bring emergency broadcasting or, you know, something like, you know, phone and all that, that, you know, the community would benefit from it, I could go for it, but it's basically private for, you know, in a way it's private, so, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Walker and also Commissioner Abbott on this.
Okay. Any further discussion? The applicant.
Applicantist though.
Yes.
Um, we do, actually, the emergency system, we, we're online with that, and therefore, when all the other radio stations go down, we're, we're it in this area, and because we are where we are, or if we get okay to be on this property, we would be the only ones that are broadcasting in this area if gets peak goes down, which it does quite often because of the snow issue up there. But we do and are in line with FCC, EAS, emergency broadcast, so that is, we'd be the only one broadcasting that. And as far as the size and where we're at on the property, we'd actually be on the southwest corner, not the northwest, which makes a huge difference, and, and we can actually say that too, that we'd be willing to do whatever we need to do on the perimeter for a privacy fence or whatever. I do have a picture, and I don't know, I didn't take this and show this or send it prior to, but this is a picture of the one on Airway. If you look at it, you can see the telephone pole before you see ours.
Can place it there.
Oh, thank you. You can see the, the telephone pole way before you see the actual tower, very unobtrusive. In, in my eyes, it, it's actually more unobtrusive than the telephone pole. And the telephone pole is at 75 foot, and that tower is almost exactly like the one that we're planning on putting up, and it sits 100 foot, so.
Okay.
So that gives you a little bit more understanding of what it would look like.
I, I have a comment for the applicant. My cellphone goes off with Amber Alerts and things.
Yes.
And with today's technology with phones.
Mm-hmm.
I can't see the importance of yours, that's one reason I voted against it.
Okay.
The importance that you see, so I'm, I'm missing something if there is, so.
Okay.
I, I think there's, in today's world, we get a lot of alerts.
Yeah.
When many other things go down.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I, I would say this to that, I, I don't know about you, but I turn off all my alerts on my phone.
All I know, I leave mine on.
Only because sometimes you'll hear alerts coming in from Amber Alerts down in Phoenix that we're three and a half, four hours away, but on the radio, we only do the alerts that are in this area, so.
I hate to interrupt, but we're getting way off of what we're supposed to be talking about here.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We've had discussion, any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion's denied. Item number 10B.
Mr. Chairman, Commission, item number 10B is a rezone for the, the same parcel, but would not be effective without the plan amendment. And the same for item 10C.
Okay, well, let's, we got any speakers on, the applicant is present, we have two Mr. Broca, would you like to address the commission again?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Smith, would you like to address the commission?
No, sir.
No, sir, okay. Would the applicant like to address the commission? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a, any further discuss, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny items B and C.
Don't want that time.
B.
Second a motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Abbott.
Discussion.
Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. The applicant is present, we have two speakers on the item. Mr. Broca, would you like to talk again? Mr. Smith, would you like to speak again?
No, sir.
Would the applicant like to speak again? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Staff did not record a motion.
Oh, we didn't have a motion?
No.
Gee.
We need a motion.
I need a motion? Why is that important? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to disapprove item C.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Stilberg, second by Commissioner Gordon, and a screw-up by the chairman. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item number 11, discussion from staff.
Mr. Chairman, item number 11 is an amendment to Mojave County Ordinance Number 2010-10 to include new fees, fee increases, and fee restructuring for fees, for services provided through the implementation of the Mojave County zoning ordinance, and to include new fees for service provided through the implementation of the Mojave County Land Division regulations. Those fees were formally included, by the way, in Ordinance 2010-07, so we're taking those two ordinances and combining them. This is a discussion item mainly due to the fact that it's the board that acts on the fees, and they're, you know, basically the fiscal authority resides with them. However, we believe it's very important for you to know what's going on with the fees and for the board to be able, or excuse me, the commission to be able to weigh in on that matter. So we're bringing this to you as an informational item, but we also want you to respond to it. We want you to ask us questions and tell us what you're thinking. This process began a couple of years ago when we realized that the economy was beginning to come back, we were seeing increases in our building permits, and we also had developers coming in and asking about subdivisions that had gone fallow during the recession, and start talking to us about bringing these, the subdivisions back to life and et cetera. We also were experiencing increases in permits that were of the, of a major commercial nature, and also our economic development director was getting inquiries, so it wasn't just inquiries into rooftops, it was also inquiries into what can be considered economic development programs. And some of those have come to fruition, we've had several solar, you know, solar fields built, Walmart is under construction, so we're actually seeing basically the economic generator getting, getting a little more active. So we decided that in order to be able to fund what we had coming forward in ways of staff, et cetera, we partnered with what at the time was OMB, Office of Management and Budget, it was in the county manager's office, to take a look at our fee structure, to see whether or not, you know, how, basically at, at that point in time, how much we were recouping of, basically the cost of processing different types of applications. And we also, more than once, went out and asked other jurisdictions, what are you charging? You know, for, basically for that fa, same fee and service. the result was, what you guys have is 2017XX. It does actually have a, an ordinance number now, but it's still not scheduled at this time to go to the board. And some suggestions that came, or from both department staff and the Office of OMB, or first of all, to do away with, we have a rather complicated system of, are you, what kind of rezone are you getting? Are you going to residential, commercial, how big is your lot? And in reality, it costs us about the same to process rezones, no matter what, what zone you're going to, or what size lot you're, you have. So we figured, you know, just basically a flat charge for, for the rezones began to make more sense than the, than the tiered system that we had. It would also be easier for us and our clients to remember exactly what that figure was, rather than having to calculate it out. Same thing with the, the special use permits, it's basically the same effort in processing those as well. The same advertisements get placed in, in the, in the paper, same amount of posting.
I have a question.
Yes.
Looking at the proposed auto fee, number one, number two, and number three, what's the, well, I mean, I understand the difference because they got different dollar amounts, but why do we have three different proposals, or is that the point, is we're trying to figure out which one we want to use?
Okay, you left me in the dust.
Well, on the sheet, on, on, on the piece of paper that I've got.
Uh-huh.
It says current average revenues, and it shows the current fee.
Oh, okay.
Then it says proposed auto fee, then the revenue from that, then the, there's another one that says proposed auto fee, and then there's another one that says proposed auto fee. I'm just wondering.
Can I go through those when I get to the auto fees?
Ah, absolutely.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I couldn't get my head out of where it was.
Oh, okay, well, I just, you stopped talking for about 10 seconds, so I thought I better jump in.
Yeah. For most of the, the fees that are on the zoning side, when we took a look at what OMB, and particularly in the, in the period, or on the situation with site plans, what OMB was recommending versus what the benchmarks were, which, which other counties and cities, and definitely the cities within Mojave County were charging, those actually had a tendency to go more towards the benchmarks, but there wasn't a lot of difference between those benchmarks and what they, OMB thought we'd be, ought to be charging to recover 100% of what we expend in processing a rezone. I'll kind of quickly drop down to, and I, one of the things that we are fully aware of, as you look at the, the various fees that are proposed, these are the fees that are either OMB's recommendation, or they're what our fellow counties and cities, they're similar to us, what they're charging. We're very aware that it is a substantial increase over what we're charging now, and one of the reasons for that is the fact that we set our fees 10, 12 years ago, and we haven't touched them for that period of time. And, you know, and granted, the, the economy has been slow during that period of time, that doesn't keep our paper from increasing, that doesn't keep, you know, the fuel from increasing in the vehicles.
payroll goes on.
Yeah. So th, those costs continue to increase.
And up, yeah.
Getting down to the automation fee. The automation fee is, is a fee that we put in place in 2000, I think, 2004, 2005, and the purpose of it was to fund the department's progress in automating our services. By then, we had already put into place a automated permitting system. We were finding that that permitting system had to be totally repurchased about every five to 10 years, because the company that produced that software would totally rewrite the software and reissue it, and, you know, that, I have to honestly say that during that period of time, we were able to provide better service, and the things that that to provide better service, and the things that that, for lack of a better word, the things that that software would do improved immensely. You know, we went from almost a DOS system, we're now on the webs, on the webpage. And so it didn't improve, and it was well worth the money, but we did have to budget for totally repurchasing that about every 10 years. Also, the system that we have in place now, we scan applications in, all of our applications are electronic. This fund also is the fund used to purchase all of your computers that the commission uses, the software that goes on those computers, the software and scanners that the staff uses. So through the years, this fund has had quite a bit of responsibility added to it through the years. It just started out to fund a few computers and fund some software. Now it's funding a really pretty massive system. And we can barely keep our, it's kind of like, we can keep, we can tread water where we're at, but we can't move forward. So in order to move forward, we actually are looking at the need to increase the fees. The other thing we were taking a look at is that if you purchased a, if you purchased a, one type of permit in our office, and that permit was worth, say, $100, you would end up, well, excuse me, if you purchased a permit in our department, and that permit fee was $80, you'd be charged $40 worth of automation fee. If you went and purchased, or if you purchased a permit for Walmart, you paid that same $40 fee. So one of the things we also tried to take a look at was reducing some fees, reducing the automation fee in some aspects to, for some permits, such that you weren't, you were paying less of a percentage of that permit in automation fees. We kind of take that money away from, or those fees away from the less expensive permits and transfer it to the more expensive permits. Where it actually, if you take a look at, you know, a 50, $60 million job, you know, the fact that they're paying a $75 permit or a $100 permit fee doesn't, or in this case, it would be $100 per, 500, $750, $750 permit fee, and you take a look at that versus the actual cost of the entire project, you know, it's a very minuscule portion of that or percentage of that. Now, the table that Mr. Floushey was talking about were the alternatives in the automation fee that were presented to the department by OMB. And so we had a choice of how we charged and how much revenue it brought in. We had a discussion, and we are open to also having a discussion with the commission as to how, what to charge, how to do that, how much to actually go after, and of course, commensurate, what could we do with that. We decided to take the most expensive, or the one that brought in the highest revenue, I don't want to say the most expensive route, because it depends what kind of a permit you're buying, but we decided to go in to the, go the route that brought in the most revenue. We did that for a couple of reasons, one of which is we do want to expand the system, we do want to get into things like electronic plan review. And in fact, I would, I would say that we're probably going to be forced in that direction somewhere in the next five to six years, because our clients are going in that direction, you know. I don't think we have a architect, engineer, surveyor that produces their plans by actually hand-drawing them anymore. You know, they've all got CAD programs, they all push a button and print them out. So right now, they have to print it out and bring us a disc. Well, we might get to the point where they can dump them into, either email them to us, or dump it into some sort of, something like an FTP site, and we go get it. And we dump it back, they pick it up, they see their comments, you know. So basically, it reduces the transfer of paper. We do want to go that direction. The other thing we took into consideration was how, what is the span of time between when we get a fee schedule adopted, and we're actually able to revise that fee schedule to meet the costs that we've seen over a period of time? And we're averaging something like about 12 years. So we figure, you know, we get one bite at the apple every 12 years, and I think we all make an argument that that may not be the way to do it, and you might want to be reassessing every four or five years instead of 12, because that does reduce the sticker shock, when everybody goes, well, you know, I had a permit last year that was only $500, and now you're telling me it's like $2,500? You know, and you can see their point, I certainly see their point, you know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question. One of my questions, I'm looking at the second worksheet, so I do understand that worksheet now, you had three different ways to apply the automation fee, and you chose the third.
We chose the third.
Okay. The policy that governs fees for Mojave County, I really don't know what that is, but I am very familiar with local government budgeting, I have to tell you, and fees. And one of the things that they're intended to do is to recover the cost of services that are specific to, that specifically benefit an individual or entity, and do not generally benefit the entire population, taxes, or for things that generally benefit everyone within that community or within that jurisdiction. So I noticed that this is not full-cost recovery, and if we had full-cost recovery, our fees would be twice maybe, you know, in some cases, what they are recommended to be. So it appears to me that either we have an extremely expensive process, and we cost twice as much as everyone else, or that these jurisdictions are all subsidizing their planning and zoning costs in order to keep them that low. And I'm guessing that that's probably the case, that there's a degree of subsidy going on by the general taxpayer for these fees, for the costs associated with developing property.
Yep.
So I would be interested if there is a policy as far as cost recovery and the fees that are set, and what degree the general taxpayer would be subsidizing this, although that's probably not our purview, that was just a question that's in my mind, if there is one. And then the other thing is, what methodology was used to calculate this, this percentage of cost, and to actually set the fees that you determined in relation to the other jurisdictions? It seems like were pretty high compared to, say, Bullhead City, or I think Flagstaff is the only one that has higher costs, but maybe they haven't reviewed their fees in several years, so maybe all of these are old fees that we're comparing to.
There were a lot of questions in there.
I can tell you that these fees are about half of what they are in Lake Havasu.
The Havasu is...
I just got a permit, and it was like $2,300.
Mr. Chairman, if I could start off with the first question, and the first question is, you know, what are we trying to recover?
Right.
And the county, my understanding, county does have a policy on recovery. We try and get as close to full recovery as we can get. I will tell you the information, most of the information we used in calculating full recovery, some of that information is a year or so old. So we may not be fully recovering, we may be recovering, say, 90 to 95%. Our current fees will, most of our current fees are good if we recover a third. So right now, definitely with the fees we have right now, we're subsidizing individuals and people who come and pick up permits, or do, you know, get rezones, apply for rezones. Here again, you know, Commissioner Brule is correct. The setting of fees is a policy, it is a fiscal policy and a development policy that the board makes every time they adopt a budget. And I think, you know, throughout the years, you know, I think it was two years ago, the finance director, you know, gave a report to the Board of Supervisors that said, that recommended to them that they would need to find additional revenue sources. And of course, one of the things you do look at is our fees, because fees are for a service purchased. And you're quite correct, it's, you know, it's not generally applicable like a taxes. You know, you only get a fee if you come into our office and buy something. How they were figured out, the methodology was basically to make an estimate of how much staff time went into a particular class permit, or a particular class of service. How much does it, you know, how much effort generally goes into a rezon? How much generally goes into the processing of a subdivision? And the, once you have kind of the personnel cost to doing that, then there was an estimate for, for lack of a better word, what I'd call overhead, which would include everything from putting advertisements in the newspaper, to purchasing posters for hosting property. It also includes, you know, the production of our paychecks, the, you know, portions of finance, human resources, basically, that infrastructure that's required.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to thank you, you more than answered my question, and I really commend staff, I could see there's a tremendous effort and a tremendous amount of work that went into creating this. It's never a popular thing to do in one sense, and so I do commend you for all of the work, and staff are doing such a tremendous job in trying to cover all bases when coming up with new recommendations. Thank you.
A couple of items I would, I would kind of bring to the commission's attention. We are continuing to play with some of the automation fees, and I think one of the directions we're looking is some of the lower-cost fees, or some of the lower-cost permits, and particularly, and this is going to apply more to the building permits than, than the, you know, subdivisions and rezones, et cetera, that this body deals with, but to do some of those fees, as flat fees, as opposed to, you know, things like if you buy a, if you're going to buy a 200 amp building permit fee, it's going to cost you X. You know, and reduce some of the complication there for both the purchaser and the staff. The other thing I will point out, too, is that I am aware that, for the most part, we're sticking pretty close to the benchmarks for things like rezones and plan amendments and things like that. We are a little higher on the subdivision side than some of the benchmarks, as you said. City of Flagstaff was the one that, that we've come closest to. Those subdivision fees are more based on how much it actually cost us to process that. I, there are a lot of ways, I guess, that you can give us comment back. We are going to, you know, one of the questions, Commissioner Brule called me about this matter early on, and she, one of the questions she asked is, has this gone to the public? No, it hasn't. This is sort of the rollout. And we are required by Arizona statute to publish this on our webpage for 60 days. And so somewhere in the next week, it will be published on our website for 60 days, and it will be available for public viewing and comment and all of that during that period of time. So, you know, we have probably roughly, okay, I can't talk anymore, you know, what is it, past noon? All right, that's it, I've lost my ability to speak. We have roughly about, you know, somewhere between 60 and 75 days, or something like that, to take comments, to consider what, not just this group, but anybody who has, you know, thinks they have a stake in our fee structure, which is anybody who may do business with us currently or in the future, to receive comments from those folks as well. So I would, you know, you can talk about it today, you can, we can, you know, you're more than welcome to call Tim or myself, and we'll talk to you about the fees. If you want us to bring it back on the agenda, you know, so you can go home, think about it for 30 days and come back and give us your opinion, we're open to that as well. The other thing is somewhere we're open, well, open to is, you know, not imposing these immediately at the full cost, but perhaps over a two- or three-year period of time, kind of easing them into place. That's another option.
So the three items that we have proposed auto fees, these are the three that the board's going to make a decision on, or based upon what we recommend? Is that what you're saying? Because I think the, it's long overdue that we increase the fees, but I just didn't know if you're looking for one of these three from us, or just general discussion?
Yeah, probably just general discussion. This is not part of an ordinance that the commission makes direct recommendations.
Right, right, yeah, we don't even vote on this.
No. Now, having said that, I mean, you're certainly, you're certainly well, able to make a recommendation. The fee structure that you have, there's three different ones. One's for things that are more attached to the zoning ordinance, rezones, variances, use permits. A second one is attached to things that are produced through the land division ordinances, subdivisions, plats, abandonments, conversions to acreage. And then the auto fee is applied to everything. It's applied to everything you purchase from us through the, you know, in getting your zone changed, or as a result of the zoning ordinance, anything you purchase from us as a result of the land division regulations, and any building permit you purchase from us.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just, I don't know if this is forwarded to the board, but to the degree that you recover full costs, I applaud this, and I think that that is the right thing to do. I think it's the best thing to do, and I believe that you've come as close to that as you possibly can in being fair, so I think it's a good structure. And the other thing, my feeling would be that it should always recover as close to full cost as possible, and that it be reviewed and updated at least, I guess, what would that be, triennially, every three years? Every three years?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a comment I'd like to make, I think as a homeowner, a property owner. I just helped a lady get a house roofed, helped get her the money to pay for it. She makes $750, she has $751 a month coming in. I think that represents a lot of people in this county. And you have permits, you got to put a roof on your house to get a permit. You get a power pole, you get a permit. I know it costs money to make a power pole. I think you should really, the supervisors and whoever's involved should really look hard at eliminating some of these things. If someone's going to roof their house, instead of abandoning it, we should applaud them and pay them, instead of charging them a permit to roof their house. So that's, and I really, you've got a big picture here you're trying to cover, and I appreciate, you know, what you're doing, but those are just some of the things that affects people in this community.
Okay, well, actually, I agree with Commissioner Brule a little bit, I think we need I think we need to review this, you know, I don't know, about every three years, but certainly every five years. Otherwise, we get, you get caught up in, do you raise it 25 cents or do you raise it 80 cents? And if you raise it 25 cents every five years, it's a whole lot less stressful on the, those that can't even afford it to, on their pocketbook. And I also agree with Bill. You know, some of these permits, I mean, to put a, get a permit to put a new roof on your house is kind of crazy. I mean, you should be able to do that as a homeowner without having to get a permit for someone to re-roof your house or, and there's other examples, I'm sure, but.
If I can kind of summarize the conversation that's going on is that, yes, we probably do need to increase the fees, yes, we should be reviewing our fees more frequently to, you know, kind of, you know, keep sticker shock from totally, you know, taking the breath away from everybody, including the staff. But on the other hand, maybe we should also at the same time be taking a look at some of the things we charge and whether or not those are actually things we should be charging for, things we should be getting into.
I would say yes to all of those.
Maintenance on a house or something? Go ahead. I, I just think if it's maintenance on a house, you shouldn't have to get a permit. If you're going to add on, yes, but if you're just doing maintenance on your house, I don't think you should have to get a building permit.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, right now in the city of Kingman, if you are the homeowner and you're going to upgrade your electrical, let's say the panel's going bad, you still got to pull a permit, but they'll do a courtesy inspection. You basically got to go down, fill out the paperwork, they want to know what you're doing, they'll come out and inspect it. If it is a rental, they will charge you. So maybe, I don't know if that's something we want to look at or...
Yeah, I mean, those are all...
Does that might make the difference if somebody fixes it or if they say can't afford it?
Yeah.
I'd like to say one other thing to the staff and, if, I look at the paper every day and I see permits for homes, I see what the county charges, I see what the city charges. You've done a good job to keep those costs down compared to the city, and I believe it's helped people make decisions to build homes. Because you're talking about $3,000, $4,000 and a lot of these.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since I'm in this part of the economy, when you talk about maintenance, maintenance is a very wide range of, you know, things that, you know, you have. When you talk about the roof, if it is just a shingle or composite roof losing, and they want to replace it is one thing, but if there is a damage to the plywood that, you know, the inspector, they need to go out there and inspect the plywood, you know, that requires, you know, the inspection that they need to have. So I disagree that there should not be an inspection. I think that, you know, should be courtesy, as Keith said, or reasonable based on the time of the service or amount of service. So that is one of the things that, you know, I believe that we, we need to consider. In terms of, you know, the fees, by the state law, the money that is being paid for the permit is for the service rendered. They cannot take the money and place it into the general fund or anything like that. So at the same time, if the, if the department, building department is going to run on a very thin ice, that translates to the service that they can provide. Because if they cannot get inspectors because they don't have the budget, that is going to also be harmful to the homeowners that they want to move in and are paying construction financing and every day that, you know, passes by, you know, you're going to have problems. So there is a, there is a fine line between, you know, the service versus the fee. And I think that, you know, when you're looking at the economy, you know, I know that we talk about the past, you know, 10, 12 years, et cetera, most of us, we want to forget about the past 10 years, you know, with this economy we had around us, 2007 to 2017. So, you know, I think that's where I believe, you know, we need to think about it and as the economy is opening up and all that, definitely we want to make sure that, you know, the building department and also Mojave County is well situated and ready for, you know, future growth that we're going to have. I'm not sure about Kingman, I don't have any information, but I know in Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley, a lot of activities are happening, there's a lot of excitement going on, and I believe that, you know, the building department needs to be matching into that, you know, growth and the excitement. I mean, we saw for 10 years that I've been sitting here, there was nothing going on and now all of a sudden we have a restaurant, gas station coming up, you see a lot of different projects are coming up. And that requires budgets that they need to be able to provide that service. So it needs to be that balance between, you know, what the quality of the service versus, you know, the fee that they charge. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my comment after kind of reviewing this with the Building Board of Appeals as well, I think, my feeling is, is to make it more palatable to the public and kind of help prevent pushback from the public. I, I like the idea of, of, of when you, when you adopt it is to, you know, phase the, the fees in over, over a two or three year period so it's, it's not like huge difference from, from the, from what it is now. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just had one other input. We stated we wanted to do this more often so we didn't have sticker shock, I suppose, but the main reason is for fairness or equity to all citizens who reside in the county. Okay.
Anybody else? That's all we got for you today. I know. Call to the public?
Can he go? I don't think he's safe.
You're the only one we got here to come. All right, all right, call to the public is not closed. You got saved again. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Selberg and seconded by Commissioner Walker. Those four, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, whoever wants to stay here, say, say I'm not. Meeting's over. Adjourned.